Haven't heard anything. I'll now call to order the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shailo, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Mr. Witt.
Present.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
Okay, if we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item is approval of today's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff? Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the March tenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. The next item is six A under public comments and communications is a public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address an item that's not on our current agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our agenda?
Good afternoon. Wendy Molten, Library Director here, and I just wanted to give our annual report out to all the commissioners today for twenty twenty four, and if you have any questions about it, feel free to contact me anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I want to begin by acknowledging Mr. Marsh's defamatory statements made against me at the last meeting. Public service is a responsibility I do not take lightly, and I recognize that trust, integrity, and professionalism are essential to how we conduct ourselves as leaders in this community. Therefore, I must forcefully address the personal accusations made against me. I take Mr. Marsh's claims of lying and lack of integrity seriously, and I categorically reject them. These accusations were made publicly without a single piece of evidence to support them, in stark contrast to the many issues I have brought to this body with piles of evidence and support. Throughout my time on this commission, I have acted in good faith, sometimes directly, frequently, very passionately, but always with the intent to serve the best interests of our city. Disagreements are natural in a governing body. They can be uncomfortable, but comfort should not be the driver for governing a city. What concerns me more is the pattern of behavior from Mr. Marsh that he has asked this body to tolerate. I struggle with the many instances in which he has failed to hold himself accountable to the city in this commission. Failures, I believe, have been a detriment to our community. As a recent example, Mr. Marsh presented the commission with a contract from Olson Engineering for Airport Services in which more than half of the cost was allocated to overhead and profit without putting the contract out to bid. That's not just a procedural oversight, it's a missed opportunity for transparency and fiscal responsibility. Shining light on these situations is not disrespectful. It is how our government is designed to function through transparency, accountability, and the responsible, efficient use of public funds. When we allow those who are questioned to paint themselves as victims and deflect from the many issues, we begin to tolerate distraction, accept dysfunction, and normalize mismanagement. I remain committed to working with every member of this body, whether we agree or disagree, to move this city forward. We owe it to our community to focus on the issues that matter and to model solutions-oriented leadership. I stand by my record, my intentions, and my integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda?
Ray Miller, Abilene, to follow up after that. It's been over a year since we've dealt with this nonsense. You have whatever it is against Marsh. I, as well as some other people that I have spoke with, are done. It's like a temper tantrum up here every two weeks, man. Deal with it or let it go. We're tired of it. That's all we hear more time, just you constantly chirping at people that you don't agree with, and it's not from a place of love or lifting up. It's because you have an agenda, and I can see it, and I'm not an educated man. Find out what the problem is and find a solution for it, but quit sitting using this forum as your own personal way to get your crap done. It's, we're over it. We're tired of hearing about it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda?
Greg Wilson, twenty-two oh one, South Washington. I have two issues that I have real concerns about. The city manager. I think we should have an independent investigation into allegations for the good of Abilene, and you would think Mr. Marsh would want for his concerns also, and I would think everyone could agree on that. We need an independent investigation. Taxes, number two. It looks like we need our own Doge committee here to look into where all the money is going. After another five percent increase in assessed value on my house, my payment has gone up another hundred dollars per month for taxes. On assessed value of sixty-six million citywide, that is an additional three point three million dollars of assessed value. Without a corresponding decrease in tax levy of five percent, we are looking at another budget increase of many thousands of dollars. My, I have two suggestions. I suggest you freeze your budget with no new taxes until you pay off one of the bond issues. And or both, lower the tax levy at five percent to stay even with last year, because your budget's increased from fourteen million to nineteen million. This year, I'm sure it'll be over twenty. And if, if, if that, if we don't get something done with the taxes issue, which is what the state's trying to do also, there is, there is an election coming up in the fall, and I, and I think there'll be some changes made then. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will move into the first proclamation, which is the First Responders Wellness Week proclamation. Whereas first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services, EMS, personnel, nine-one-one dispatchers, correctional officers, and members of other organizations in the public safety sector, come together to protect and aid our community in the event of an emergency, and whereas first responders risk their life and safety every day in the performance of their duties to protect our citizens, and whereas first responders are tasked with handling dangerous and complicated situations, and whereas nationwide law enforcement officers will go through an average of a hundred and eighty-eight critical incidents throughout the course of their career, and whereas first responders often experience stress that has real physical impacts, including cardiac issues, diabetes, obesity, and sleep issues, and whereas first responders are up to twenty-five point six times higher risk for developing post-traumatic stress disorder when compared to individuals without such experiences, and whereas first responder wellness includes management of issues including, but not limited to, sleep, fitness, nutrition, fatigue, anger management, post-traumatic stress, and loss, and whereas we recognize the integral role first responders play in our communities and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice, and unhesitating dedication, and whereas research shows that fostering a strong wellness culture inside first responder agencies enhances relations within the communities they serve. Now therefore, the Abilene City Commission does hereby proclaim March twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as First Responder Wellness Week in Abilene, Kansas, in testimony whereof, I have run to set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Abilene, Kansas to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of March, twenty twenty-five. All right, and our next proclamation is six C GeoCash Week proclamation. Whereas geocaching is a modern-day treasure hunt that encourages adventure, exploration, and outdoor recreation by using GPS-enabled devices to locate hidden caches in public spaces, and whereas Abilene, Kansas, with its rich history, scenic landscapes, and welcoming community, provides an ideal setting for geocaching enthusiasts of all ages to discover local landmarks, hidden gems, and historical sites, and whereas geocaching promotes tourism and economic development by attracting visitors to Abilene, encouraging them to explore our parks, trails, and attractions while supporting local businesses, and whereas geocaching fosters curiosity, problem-solving, and a spirit of adventure, making it a fun and educational activities, activity for families, students, and outdoor enthusiasts, and whereas the Flint Hills Geocachers are hosting the Midwest Open Geocaching Adventure, M O G A, in Abilene from March twenty-eighth through thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, bringing geocachers from across the country to experience our community and participate in exciting competitions, challenges, and activities, and whereas Abilene continues to add and welcome new activities and events, further enhancing its reputation as one of the best small towns to visit, and whereas the City of Abilene and local geocaching groups are dedicated to promoting outdoor recreation and community engagement through special events, challenges, and new cache placements. Now, now therefore, I, Brandon Ryan, Mayor of the City of Abilene, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of March twenty-fourth through thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as GeoCash Week in Abilene, Kansas, and encourage residents and visitors alike to participate in geocaching activities, explore the beauty and history of Abilene, and embrace the adventure that awaits in our great city, and witness whereof, I have run to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Abilene, Kansas, to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of March, twenty twenty-five.
One, two, three, smile big. Do one more. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, under business items, our next item is seven A. Consider approval of a funding option for the industrial park infrastructure, C-Clip twenty twenty-six project, and the recreation improvements in the amount of nine point one five million dollars. City Manager Marsh.
Commissioners, this is the funding options we've been discussing for the last three months. We have it on the business agenda for hopefully approval today.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item or comments from the public? Just state your, state your name, three-minute time limit.
Diane Miller, sixteen oh one Jayhawk Street. My biggest concern in this funding option is the seventy-five thousand street sales tax. The, the community understands that that street sales tax is for street maintenance for our existing streets. That hasn't been done for twenty years, maybe. We've lived on our street eighteen, and it has, it was overlaid the fall before we moved in. That was eighteen years ago. It's literally crumbling, and this is not the only street in town. Every, everywhere we look, we've quit budgeting for street maintenance, and instead, we're diverting that sales tax money to big projects, and we're letting our streets just literally disintegrate. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise putting that in as part of the funding anywhere. I also wonder about your CD that you've got. You've got a four million dollar CD in the bank. I don't know when it matures. What is that money tagged for? When, when will that be available to use for projects like this that normally would be funded out of the general fund? Not, not the, is a sports complex because that has a special funding source, but there should be money for the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar match. Just out of the general fund. We used to be able to do that all the time. So I don't, I guess I don't understand why we have to have long-term funding. We're already in debt without the, without the hospital bond, two, four, five, six, seven, eight million dollars, and we're wanting to add another nine million, and that, that's not something that I think is sustainable for a city this size. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions for staff or comments from the public on this item?
I do have a couple of comments here. There's three projects that are included in this. The industrial park infrastructure project, which is projected to cost three point two five million dollars, of which two point five million would be reimbursed. The C-Clip project for twenty twenty-six, which also includes what was supposed to be the twenty twenty-five C-Clip project, which is one point one million dollars in city funds, and then the bond for the recreation improvements that were just passed in the recent election. We basically are at square one, from what I understand, with the recreation project, and Mr. Witt, I'm kind of looking in your direction. If you can correct me on that, I know we basically told the previous contractor that they would not be doing the project.
Oh, we rescinded, the city commission rescinded that letter of intent, so there is right now a request for proposals published to different vendors. So what that will look like, is everything up to this point has been conceptual, so no design has been done, and so the next phase is finding a vendor who will design and then, then bid and build out the project. So, so not square one, but not to the point where there's anything where you can get real numbers from. It's all cost estimate, cost estimation.
I guess that's kind of the, the view I have of this whole project, but I think we have obligated the city to four million dollars through that process, and the way this is designed, it would be done as a line of credit, so there wouldn't be any real out-of-pocket expense for having that line of credit in place, but really, the only funds that we would need would be the seven hundred and fifty in addition to that for the industrial park. Those other projects have not been approved, and I don't think we've got enough knowledge about them to move forward, and I don't know, again, Mr. Witt, I might look to you for a timeline on that, but my guess is that that's a twenty, mid, summer twenty twenty-six project if we're lucky.
Oh, for?
Construction, where we're actually spending funds.
Balls fields. So the timeline, and I don't, I've got the outline from our, our meetings, but next commission meeting, we should have a study session, or no, and two commission meetings, hopefully. Okay. So within the next probably month to April or so, April, May, the commission will be able to review those RFPs, and then design happens, construction starts, but you don't want to lay turf down in the winter, so we're looking at likely a spring of next year of when turf actually starts going down. So dirtwork and all that would happen before, but that's how that works.
So when I look at this, really, all we need is four point seven five million in permanent funding, and I think that we could probably have the other project completed within that four point seven five along that timeline. I think even if there is some work, there would be, so with essentially allowing four point seven five million in bonds, we would be able to expend that three point two five for the industrial park project and be reimbursed by that. My understanding is that they've committed to a very quick reimbursement timeline for that. We would still, if it doesn't get Doge, there, the, really, the timeline that we're under is getting the jobs in place, and to me, that's, that's a high priority. We're not going to get those jobs until we get that infrastructure in place. So I believe that we can do that with permanent financing of four point seven five for this project. Again, I, I think the C-Clip needs to be deleted from here. We don't have anything that's been voted on and approved by the commission, and again, we're talking about twenty twenty-six dollars. I think we can worry about that in our twenty twenty-six budget if we want to do that. I'm not, I don't feel like opening up a credit card for some expenses that we might have in the future, so that's my proposed course of action is just do allow up to four point seven five, essentially, which would cover the four million for recreation, seven hundred and fifty for the industrial park, and essentially use that four point seven five to cash flow the two point five until reimbursed by the state.
And that was my question for you, when you said four point seven five was that, that industrial park project is three and a quarter total, and then once it's finished, we would get reimbursed for that two point five?
Correct.
So where would the two and a half million come in the meantime?
My expectation is that we can complete that before we needed to draw that for the recreation infrastructure project.
Yeah, I'm not sure the legalities of.
I think we may, we may even have to do more than that temporarily, but I, my expectation is that the permanent bond would be four point seven five million dollars. No more than.
Four million for the?
Four point seven five, including the four million for recreation, four point seven five total. I mean, kind of with the information that we have, I'm, I'm personally not feeling any urgency to push this forward and vote on it today either. I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel about that, but I am more than fine sitting on this. If we need to do some research to see what a timeline is for construction on the industrial park to see if that is possible to only issue four point seven five, we pay a percentage of those, whatever is issued in fees, and so we would save money by only issuing what we absolutely need. I would also like every, every bit of that industrial park to be bid out, though that's never been popular previously.
Do we have any further questions for staff?
No, no questions for me, just some clarifying points from my perspective on it. Where a sharing agreement is industrial park and, and the ball fields. So with those two projects, again, industrial park is a two and a half million grant. City side is seven fifty. Again, that's also working off estimates because we don't have full design for that out there yet. And also bids haven't come in yet, so costs can always be different. Four million is what our bond council told us what that ball field sales tax can support. So they always work off conservative estimates there. So that's the maximum amount we could bond through that funding source. And then perspective on the C clip, we don't have a funding source right now for the design of that project because in these past two budget years, we've been incredibly slim, where we have been under the revenue neutral rate when it comes to property tax. So any budget increases have been because we've gotten granted dollars that we had to budget for. So when you get a two million dollar grant, you have to budget for that. So that's why those increases you can see there. And then also budget can increase also because of utility sales go up and those aren't tax funds. Those are utility funds. So we don't have a funding source right now for C clip, for those Buckeye improvements. We do have an allocated grant from Department of Transportation to, to pay for that resurfacing. And if anybody drives down on Buckeye right now, you can see that it's in rough shape and getting rougher. And there are stormwater inlets that are broken, just like in the area that just got repaired over by the museum in St. Andrews. So it's a project that has a need. It's a main commerce way. We need a funding source for the design for it. And this funding source captures not only design, but also those estimated construction costs. So I'm for this as presented in option one. And again, all this is shaking out to where there's a temporary financing for forty eight months and then likely the amount that will get put into long-term debt is going to be around that four point eight or less is what it looks like right now. So that's my understanding and, and my perspective on it.
I don't mean to be contrary, but the proposal in front of you says permanent financing at five point eight five.
Five point eight, sorry. No, you're just correcting me.
Right, now that five point eight five, four million is paid for by that sales tax earmarked for the recreation improvements. And then the one point eight five would be a worst case scenario on the the existing. Now that doesn't take into account any lot sales at the industrial park, et cetera, that could pay that down as well before it goes to permanent financing. So we could realize a fairly, a much smaller amount on permanent financing versus this temporary financing.
Yeah, as well as revenues coming in from this, the ball field sales tax can go right into paying that down.
Again, just the other side of that is we could also be on the hook for two point five million if we don't have the jobs out there by twenty twenty eight. So it's not a, it's not a free lunch.
Any questions from the rest of the commissioners?
Say we can, or we get too far in the commission discussion, we can have a motion in a second.
I'd make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
But a motion, do we have a second?
Entertain it, but what, putting it off a few weeks, what would be gained?
I would like to see if we could basically stay under that four point seven five by essentially cash flowing it with that as the, the highest ceiling and paying for the industrial park improvements, getting reimbursed for that, and then starting on the recreation improvement project. My understanding, again, I am open to being corrected here if I misunderstood, but that we could submit receipts as we receive them and be reimbursed rapidly for those. So I don't see any reason why when we get a bill, we can't turn it around and get reimbursed to avoid taking on additional debt.
On which portion do you, are you saying that we would be rapidly reimbursed? Because on which project, with reimbursement piece?
Leanne's making some faces. I might like some input from her.
I just want to be clear that we have to have money in a fund in order to spend it. So if we don't have it in that fund earmarked for that, we cannot spend it. That's thus this point of getting it bonded so that we have it to spend to be reimbursed. Because at this point, we do not have any upfront funds for these projects that are, that are in the bank. That's the problem.
Thank you for that correction. Yeah, I, I, thank you very much. We do have to bond out the full amount of that project. We don't have to take all that money out, if that makes sense. So we will have to do an amount in, I guess in my example, seven point two five, but with the expectation again that we have four point seven five in permanent funding.
Okay, there is still a motion on table. Do we have a second?
Oh, second to motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I guess I would just like to clarify some of my assumptions if those need to be clarified with the state on what those, those reimbursement timelines would be as well as the timelines for the project.
Yeah, my understanding is it's reimbursable upon completion of the project.
And I don't think that was my understanding. So I guess that's, I would like that to be clear.
Do we have any further commission discussion?
I made a note that I'll look into that.
Do we have any further commission discussion? I am not in favor of this motion. I think we've got a great plan in place. It's a drawdown line of credit. We won't realize the interest expense on funds that we don't need or funds we don't need right now. So if we need them toward the end of the year, we will start paying interest once the funds are actually drawn down. I think we do need a funding source in place for these projects. We have studied this long enough. And that is why I will be voting no. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
No.
Myself, no. Motion carries. Our next item is seven B. Consider approval of the ten-year capital improvement plan. CIP, city manager Marsh, finance director Johnson.
Okay, there is a little bit of a change from when I presented it, or when we presented it from the study session. I wanted to point out that we added the library tuck point, tuck pointing to the buildings and facilities as well as the twenty twenty seven, correct, twenty twenty seven C clip? That's the one, the fourteenth street from Buckeye to Brady. No. Which one did we add?
Twenty twenty seven, which is Buckeye from Fifth Street to Eighth.
You said Buckeye to Eighth, correct?
Yes, I forgot to update the agenda. It's on the actual, the spreadsheet. He is correct in that it is the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight pavement restoration, Fifth Street to Eighth Street.
I did have a chance to review just a couple of line items here. This is in the blue. This is the water department. We have in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, an estimate of fifteen million for water tower replacements. And I did, again, just very cursory research. And you'll find the same thing I did if you do a Google search for water tower replacement cost and found that most of those were getting replaced for somewhere in the neighborhood of five million dollars. Some of those numbers were dated. I expect those, those are probably a little bit low based off of a post-COVID era, but I also don't know that fifteen million has any basis in fact. And I have some concerns that maybe the rest of the numbers were just haphazardly thrown on this sheet as well for us to approve. And I have a problem putting that in as a guide for future commissions if there is no basis in fact. And so I would like whomever put these together, I don't know if these are by department, but I would like to have numbers that have a more realistic representation of what those expected costs will be before I would be willing to approve this.
What were the ones you were specifically referencing?
Specifically and only water towers.
Okay.
So there's, again, I found replacement costs of five million dollars per water tower in other cities much larger than Abilene.
What was the size of those water towers?
I didn't measure them. I, but I'm telling you, I think we can, we can get a little bit closer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. Just some of your statement is true. With the tower structures, our biggest concern that's an unknown was the cost of infrastructure. So whatever we do when it comes time to do our water tower updates, upgrades, we then have to get the infrastructure put in place to get to the water towers. And basically, we kind of had a, a drive-through today with a wishlist of where these towers might go on property, whether it be city-owned property, whether it be property we have to obtain. But almost everywhere we're looking at right now, we have major infrastructure that needs to get to the tower to actually make it work. So that, with the rising costs of what we've seen on just some specific waterline projects, in my opinion, very short runs, that, that adds up very quickly. We're talking big line supply, altitude valves, a whole network of everything besides just a tower cost. So there are some unknowns on what it's going to cost. It, it, being honest, it was a guesstimated number. I would like to hope that it's not like that, but the reality is it probably could be. So not only just what everybody sees as a visual of the water tower just sitting there, there's a lot to get to it. Make it loop back into the system. Some of the things that we're talking about now, obviously for fire suppression and water supply and everything, we're trying to get some systems looped right now. And for those of you that don't quite understand what that is, it means connecting a water source in through a, a second way to any designated area or, or just so you don't have something go wrong with a single line dedicated to going to one section or whatever. If something goes wrong with that line, then everybody's in trouble with no water supply. So so that's kind of why the estimate was put together in that regard.
Can you speak to any of the other things, I guess, that are under your purview here?
Sorry, I did my list back there. What, what were they?
Well, I mean, it mentions, I think actually most of it kind of touches your departments. Streets, stormwater, sanitary sewer, water system, parks and public grounds, public buildings, facilities, airport. There's a lot of stuff that I think is all kind of tangential there.
Sure. So when it comes to the street wise, the biggest thing that we're seeing there is we've got some problems that need to be taken care of the streets. I've, I've got a big plan and set in motion that you guys will be hearing soon coming up that has to deal with the street tax part that's been, but our biggest issue that we're dealing with in the street, just like anything, is materials and everything has just skyrocketed. We, we simply can't get as much done with what we used to money-wise when it comes to, whether or not we're doing the work or if it's a big project, which at this point we're needing on a lot of our streets, it's contracted work. So the airport, excuse me, Commissioner Koloff, I'm not real familiar with what, what that one was specifically about. That's not necessarily in mind. Wish I have my list right in front of me, but.
I can hand you this if you want.
Yeah, will you? So yeah, we're, we're talking about programmable impact, input-output on the master control cabinets. And we're talking about the SCADA networks in both the water and wastewater treatments. So I've already been dealing with this a lot. Our stuff is very dated. We did a preliminary look-through of what what some costs were going to be. And of course, they're simply high dollar. I guess what we're dealing with right now is the SCADA programs that we're using have basically an SD, not an SD card, but a card that, that fits into the computer network. They're basically outdated. They're not making them anymore. We have gotten our hands on some of the last ones out there in the network, hoping that nothing goes wrong with them. So that is probably one of the number one things we need to be looking at because I come from a highway and a street department world, but I know one thing. If your community doesn't have water, you've got a big problem going on. And we definitely need those to make the whole system work. Basically, they read back and forth to the wells. The water distribution, we had water main replacement projects, kind of the same thing we're dealing with on the Spruce Way project. We've got the outdated lines. We're seeing lateral cracking, just several projects around town that need to be updated. They're basically old four-inch lines. We're, the standard is we're using six inch now. Our latest one, some of the worst ones that are listed, we've had multiple breaks within the last year. And so we're looking at wanting to update some of them. We've got a water line to the water wastewater treatment plant. Definitely, we just talked about and visited that project potentially upcoming today. It's broken about five times in the last year and a half. Basically, it's a PVC pipe. Probably not what you'd recommend nowadays, but it's turning brittle. We've got breaks in it. Water tower replacements are what they are. We kind of discussed that. We just know that the infrastructure, getting them in place is going to be high dollar. Recharging all eight pressure filter media, and that's something that needs to take place in the water plant every about ten years. We're, we just kind of budget that in because it's not a cheap project to do. It's, it's staying in compliance with KDHE. And our plant is twenty-six years old, by the way, right now. So as an engineered estimate lifespan of a water treatment plant, they look at fifty years. At the fifty-year mark, you're either going to have to decide as a commission whether you're going to start over and rebuild, or if you're going to basically gut it and start over with new components. And that's just the, the way of the world there. Reverse osmosis membranes is basically the same, exactly what I'm just talking about. It's about updating, keeping things up to date. Not cheap to do in any means. The dehumidifier in the water treatment plant, if any of you ever visited, you know that the humidity is high in there in the summertime. Very expensive to do. You can walk in there and at certain times you could, it acts like it's raining on you inside the building because you've got water everywhere in the building. It's a dehumid, you know, it's a humidity situation. Stormwater, we're going to talk about the Northeast Drainage Project a little bit today. The Southeast Drainage Project is something that's taken on basically for quite a, quite a while on the southeast part of the town that takes it to the riverbed. It kind of drains off the Brady area, large portion of town. I know that we've had four or five major situations with the tube that is, that's broken. It's just simply outdated. In all my years of highway construction, we had a fail there last summer. Unfortunately, I don't know, we had a combine over the field, the tube collapsed in the combine, settled through it. One of them bad situations that I've just never seen a clamshell type culvert tube. So it's basically old and outdated. It needs to be done. I'm looking at the street, connecting links. Those are what they are, in my opinion. Resurfacing is the most important part. Whatever the commission decides to do with the connecting links, I'd like to see the improvements with everything that goes with it. But basically, the state owns the highways. We just maintenance. I'd hate to see us forever, whatever reason, turn down KDOT-funded money to resurface any of them projects. If we don't choose to accept that money from KDOT, then we as a city are going to be coming up with the money to do it ourselves. Sorry, John, this, this turned out on.
She should just be able to touch the screen. On those, on the C clip projects?
Yeah, go ahead.
On the C clip projects, the On the C clip projects, the, so the, one of the grants that we were just talking about was for $800,000 and that's to go from the railroad tracks just south of Second Street to Fifth Street. That was supposed to be the 2025 project, right? And what I heard you say is that resurfacing is the most important. And I, I tend to agree with you. I'm curious what the cost is to resurface, let's say a four lane city block like we've got there.
Good question, because I'm going through this and some of my information I'm going to be bringing up to you. I've been in contact with a couple of local overlay companies very prominent in this area. Been in contact with a couple that are a little bit further outreach, the Wichita and Marysville area. I'm talking Hall Brothers, Schilling, APAC, company out of Wichita. So one thing that we have to keep in mind, right, I'm going to ask you to keep in mind here in the future as we move forward with this is your standard traffic lane is 12, 12 foot wide. They can be 13 in certain areas. So when we're talking curb to curb within a city setting, we're talking four lanes of travelway plus an extended area that's parking, which you're talking total width. I actually asked the contractors, kind of on a side note, what they call throw and go out on a, on a county state highway system where they're just rolling down the road and they don't have manholes to deal with. They don't have power lines to deal with and they don't have trees overhead on certain streets. The pricing does change. So getting fair, fair bidding for what you see KDOT or someone get a, a contract price for and what a city setting is, it's not comparing apples to apples. So they have a standard price on the asphalt price and everything there, but it does vary. So back to the C clip, I can't, I can't give you an idea. It's, don't quote me on this, but the little area that we did up on by the cemetery last summer as part of the agreement for the 14th Street project was pushing 30, $30,000 and, you know, and wasn't even, you know, a football field length. So it, it does add, add up significantly on, on an overlay price. So.
I'm just, I mean, let's just use that number as a placeholder. You said it's not 100 yards.
It might be, it might be 100, 150, somewhere in there. I, I don't have the exact footage, but it just doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't seem really very far.
And I think that's, I mean, probably less than half of the width of a city street. Is that?
I don't know. That one might've been a little bit wider. I mean, it might be, it might be the 24 foot wide as a travelway area. I'm not, I, I'm not sure. Right. Yeah, there, there's a, you're kind of, it's a mix up between what you're needing and, and the, and the, I can't tell you what four lane downtown, downtown Buckeye is going to look like when it comes to the overlay width and everything.
I mean, we'll get that in the bids, right?
Sure.
We'll see all that.
14th Street Industrial Park. Okay, that's it. Rogers Reconstruction. We all, you know where Rogers is, everyone. It goes by the outfield fence, by Sturro Hall. It connects basically Third Street to Eighth Street. That has needed done for quite a while. It's starting to fall apart. So we're going to have to look at base work included on that. The 14th Street project from Buckeye to Brady would be connecting the the east end. Not sure if we'd get any funding or not to help with that. It'd be hopeful, but whether or not the state would throw anything in or because it is our, one of our major truck routes. 13th Street reconstruction of Buckeye to Brady. It's in rough shape. Here's the dilemma with it. We've got a water tower currently on that street. I hate to spend, so the water, the 13th Street Water Tower sits on that street. I would hate to throw a lot of money at that right now, street wise, even though it badly needs it. If we're going to go in there in a year or two and do something with a water tower and water lines, you know, we'd be just destroying what we're painting down new. So it wouldn't be. But ultimately, something needs to be done with it. Seventh and Buckeye intersection is what it is. It's a truck intersection we've, we've had, and that falls with Seventh and Cedar. So the, the hope with the proposed C clip that, that was just mentioned from Fifth to A Street and that, that we'd include that intersection for a wider turn radius that, that would make it. All, every one of us can sit there right now and see the semi swing wide and the traffic signals have been hit multiple times there and it's just, it is what it is. So, so those are the, those are the major street ones listed on here. I think that pretty much covers most of everything you asked me about. Parks and grounds. Yeah, most of that is not mine.
How firm would you say those numbers are? I mean, again, I'm, I was looking at water towers. I'm assuming that when other people replace water towers, they're going to have the same considerations that we have.
Yeah, and it all depends on the length, the infrastructure based on a placement and, and like I said, right now, in the future, we need to be doing something about water towers. How we're going to fund them is, is the next part. Like, like I said, the infrastructure I can't, I can't even give you a clue on. I just know it's not going to be cheap. So you maybe guesstimate for the, the worst and, and and wherever they end up, maybe a cost can be cut down with the infrastructure going to them. But tying them into the network also, I'm sure there's some components of the SCADA side of that too. So in a nutshell, anything that happens with our water and wastewater systems is never going to be cheap, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you, Public Works Director Anderson. I do want to make a comment about the question of the numbers. These are not haphazard as much as they might seem to be. We did look at every single thing. We, we did do our due diligence in trying to get the best educated guess. I mean, we, we weren't going to spend a lot of time getting it exactly because we have a lot of things that we do. So we did look at other projects. We looked at previous other city projects, not the ones that Commissioner Kowaf mentioned, but those were based on other projects, other projects we either did or other cities did. So they are, there is a best guesstimate according to the director and myself and city manager.
And I think another important thing to note is every single project on this list, excuse me, every single project on this list will or would be individually approved by any commission, whether same five up here right now or completely different five. So, so it doesn't, it doesn't dictate the approval or disapproval of a project or any specific funding sources for any of the projects. So it just lays out that 10 year, this, you know, five to 10 year, this is what we know is coming down the pike. So we can start planning for it now versus when it does fail.
I guess my concern is that it sets the expectation for spending. So if we're going to go into a budget year, we're going to be looking at these numbers. I want those numbers to be tight if they're going to be used for our budget. I don't know if everybody else has the benefit of having, having reviewed this, but what we're talking about is an estimated $88 million in projects from 2025 to 2020, I'm sorry, to 2034. A large portion of that is Southeast Drainage at 25 million and two water towers estimated at $15 million each. So that's 55 million of the 88 that's proposed in this CIP. What's that?
I was just, we were just talking about the water towers.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the 10 year capital improvement plan.
And I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowaf?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is 7C, consider approval of city staff negotiating agreements and timelines for services with Energy Solutions Professionals ESP for the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant and Milig DB for all other city properties for the energy conservation and capital reinvestment program. RFQ Committee.
We included in that packet square footages. Those were the best guests on the buildings. I figured that actually would be something done with. There may be a building or two that don't have electricity. There were no well houses. We didn't put the well houses in there and that's, that was just my best guess of what I figured, what actual buildings would be paid attention to. In that shows you if they're heated and cooled, which ones are just heated and the square footages are there.
Did you come up with, with the ballpark estimate of what that initial assessment was going to cost based off the square footage?
I, I did not. The only reason is, is I didn't want to put it, everything being done at the same, at one time. I just thought that would be a very large number that wouldn't have been, went over very well. So I would, would much rather you guys discuss what buildings, talk with staff or something like that, and what buildings need to be looked at and then take those calculated to those square footages and go to three to six cents on that. So 116,000 square foot at three, that's not, three cents doesn't sound, but it adds up pretty quick. So.
And this will allow us to pick and choose the most, the highest ROI.
Absolutely.
Pieces, if we even want to go forward with any of them.
And both companies were on board with decent like that.
Yeah. And again, that, that scoping phase is at no risk for the city. The, the companies are taking on the risk to help us scope down to prioritize which buildings the only cost incurs is once we get to that investment grade audit stage. So. So then again, the expectation is that at the completion of the scoping phase, and that's going to come before the commission. So that then the commission can also provide input on what we want to focus in on. That's going to get the greatest return for that investment grade audit phase.
Any questions for Travis or any of the other members of the RFQ Committee or any staff? Thank you, Travis.
I'll make a motion for city staff to negotiate agreements with Energy Solutions Professionals for the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant and Milig DB for all other city properties for the energy conservation and capital reinvestment program.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Just so I'm clear, those final agreements would come to us for approval. Thank you.
Do we have any further commission discussion?
No.
Seeing none, we'd roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowaf?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is 7B, consider approval of the final design of the Northeast 15th Street Drainage Project and approve the engineering agreement with Olson Engineering. Jared Loomis with Olson Engineering.
Good afternoon, Jared Loomis with Olson. In front of you is the final design work order amendment for the previously discussed Northeast 15th Street Drainage Study where we got direction to move forward with option three, which is the two detention basin option. This amendment would, would get the additional survey needed for the East Detention Basin and then take full design through construction documents and then also bidding the project out. It does exclude the construction administration services at this point. Knowing, I know there's discussion of if maybe we wanted to do one basin or the other, that would change that construction administration fee. So we left it out to be added in at a later date. Now, I'll stand for any questions in regards to the.
Yeah, and just kind of recapping the conversation of going forward with option three to where, when that goes out to bid, it could be a alternate bid where we could do one or both detention basins and then we can kind of value analyze that.
Correct. Yep.
And just to reiterate too, it doesn't necessarily bring the, that an additional area with that option three. It doesn't bring it up to the 100 year flood standard, but it, it will provide a benefit.
Yes, and it, yes, it does provide a lot of benefit. It's not the 100 year, but that's also not the city requirement as well.
Do you have any further questions for Jared or any staff?
I'll make a motion to approve the final design of the Northeast 15th Drainage Project moving forward with option three with Olson Engineering.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Go ahead. Oh, I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion on this item?
Fellow Commissioners, I am a member in an LLC that owns some property in that area that may be needed to be obtained by the city. So I'll be recusing myself on this vote.
Okay. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'd roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowaf abstains. Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is 9A, City Manager's Report. City Manager Marsh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A short report today, one item. Chief Hatter has stepped down from the 911 Advisory Board and Assistant Chief Wilkins has stepped into that spot. And Fire Chief Strunk will now be the voting delegate on that board for the city. That's all I have today.
Okay. Our next item is 10A, an executive session.
I'll make a motion to move the City Commission recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 for the City Manager's Quarterly Review. This regular meeting will resume in this room at 5:09.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Kowaf?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are in executive session. We'll now call to order the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Study Session. Our first and only item is item two A bids for the purchase of a truck for the water treatment plant. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. So this is in regards to a new pickup that we were looking at getting bids on for the water treatment plant. So we sent out requests for sealed bids on March tenth to three local dealerships. For a new half ton pickup. The truck is going to replace the current two thousand twelve Chevy Silverado. Which we are going to keep within our. Public Works Department, but basically on the street department. It'll basically have a lesser use of a reason to get around a crew in a in a normal setting. This pickup that we asked for, obviously. Couple of things we wanted for sure was the V eight engine and the four wheel drive because when you're going to check the wells daily out on some. Minimum maintenance paths, basically. That's the reason for getting it. So the sealed bids were due by one o'clock on March seventeenth, and we received the three bids. Comparing apples to apples, we received a bid from Valor Automotive. For forty four thousand six hundred and seventy five. We received a bid from Home Automotive for forty five thousand one eighty seven. And we then received a bid from Long MacArthur for forty six thousand four hundred. So we're going to honestly leave the recommendation up to you. The commission can choose to accept the Valor Automotive low bid. Or award the bid to Home Automotive as Home's bid is below the five percent increase threshold for purchasing locally per the city's purchasing policy. We budgeted this. It's been on the plans for a couple of years, so. We set it in motion this a year ago and fifty five thousand is what was budgeted. For the purchase of the truck, and we have a funding source that we'd been setting aside and planning on this. So it was approved in the budget. So we'll let you discuss whoever you want the purchase to be through. Thank you.
While you're at the mic there, you mentioned looking at wells. What else is this vehicle used for?
Basically, it's the only vehicle that that. That the plan itself has with the operators over there. So it's the day to day stuff of going and testing water equality in and around town. Wells and water tower inspections that are daily, seven days a week. We have our employees that respond to that, so. That's the biggest source it is. And then if needed, it'll run to the lab in Salina. You know, for our weekly testing, we usually put that together with wastewater and water, just depending on who can get it there, so.
You mentioned this is replacing a twenty twelve Silverado. How many miles does that have on it?
I'm going to refer to Mr. Blacker. Maybe he knows. Hundred and twenty four.
Okay. Was that purchased new? Did we look at used options for a replacement vehicle?
I don't believe we did, to be honest, this this round. We kind of budgeted with it. For the new. We haven't had very many problems with it two thousand twelve that I know of, but no, we didn't. We didn't look for the used option on this one.
I guess I'm just looking at, I don't know. I'm seeing some public works guys in here that are all dirty. I don't know if they all look that dirty when they get into the truck.
Every vehicle that we end up getting is going to get that way eventually, so.
Well, I guess I just wonder if it makes sense if we've been using a twelve year old vehicle. If it makes sense to look at a two or three year old vehicle and let somebody else suffer the depreciation, driving it off the lot.
Sure.
At the risk of offending some of my dealer folks in the audience here.
Totally understand. I like the thoughts of going with a new one just because we know we're getting. We have the reliability. We do have some situations where when we do. Within public works, basically, if we're going to conferences, which some of us are going to KRWA this week. We we play musical vehicles to figure out which ones can make it to. The Wichita's, the Topeka's, the wherever we're going instead of just our local traffic and, you know, Salina, we better, we basically consider that local also, but. Another another reason to have a very good reliable truck within the public work system, honestly.
Question. Refresh my memory, wasn't it just a few years ago that we authorized a vehicle for public works or am I thinking of something else?
I'm not sure because I.
Commissioner, we did, but they have multiple pickup trucks. They're on a replacement cycle, so they have multiple pickup trucks for the different departments or different entities within public works.
Got it. Thank you.
I guess that would be my preference. I don't know about the rest of the folks sitting up here, but. Very good reliable truck within the public work system, honestly.
Question. Refresh my memory, wasn't it just a few years ago that we authorized a vehicle for public works or am I thinking of something else?
I'm not sure because I.
Commissioner, we did, but they have multiple pickup trucks. They're on a replacement cycle, so they have multiple pickup trucks for the different departments or different entities within public works.
Got it. Thank you.
I guess that would be my preference. I don't know about the rest of the folks sitting up here, but. I just don't buy new vehicles. I don't know that for a city, a city vehicle that's just going to be running around to wells for the most part. The vehicles now, I think, will run two hundred thousand miles. The one that they have now is around a hundred and twenty five without any trouble, so I guess I'd just like to look at the options and see what's out there before. We spend forty five or fifty thousand dollars on this. And I think we might appreciate that when we come up to budget if we've got an extra twenty or thirty thousand dollars that we've got for for wiggle room in our budget.
I I just kind of wanted to speak to that a little bit. Back when I'd got ours, we'd actually checked into some used ones. If you're trying to find one that's only a couple of years old, four wheel drive. That has lower miles on it. After the savings we get as government on the price of a new. It didn't seem like you saved that much buying a used was the thing because we probably have somebody here that could answer that, but I believe. It's seven or ten thousand dollars off the like the. The price that average person could go buy the same truck for, so that helps out with the depreciation and. With all the warranty stuff on this newer style stuff. Just with the injector issues or I shouldn't say injector, but the camshaft issues and stuff from the. Variable valve timing or whatever that shut down cylinders to make them run better, that does cause some premature. Engine failure, so that's just my two cents on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I think you can have issues with new cars. You can have issues with old cars. I think I'm like, I think my lowest mileage vehicle has a hundred and twenty thousand. So Ross, I see you there. I don't know if you would be willing to kind of speak to that and give us your thoughts.
Yeah, Ross Taplin, Home Automotive, you know, you would probably save. Five to seven, maybe eight thousand dollars going with the pre-owned one, a couple of years old. I'll do whatever for the city as far as doing some research and figuring that out for you. The new way, you know, you have the warranty with the brand new vehicle, spend seven or eight thousand dollars more, it probably makes it two or three or even four years. Longer, and then I think the city takes really nice care of their vehicles. They try to vacuum out anytime I'm around one, see them running around town, they're clean. So I think going with a new one would be a better way for you. But that is a hundred percent of the commission if you wanted to save seventy five to eight thousand potentially, and then. You know, all the used vehicles go through the shop, and so you'd be able to know that they were inspected, but you still lose that year or two of warranty as well.
What is the warranty on your vehicles?
Be a three year, thirty six thousand mile is what it is, and that's the theory bumper to bumper of a battery goes out or. You know, if a seat goes out, it's fixed, wind a motor, radio, those things. If you blow out a tire, that's not inside of the warranty. You have to fix that.
And if what is the limitations on? I know it's government entities. We get preferential pricing. Is there a limitation on that with used vehicles or?
No, it's just up to however we price it to you. So you go to market, you buy the vehicle, trade for the vehicle.
Sure.
However.
Okay.
Is there a like powertrain, a hundred thousand mile powertrain?
It's a five year sixty. I'd have to say on a government entity, and I get back to you on that. Some of the government ones have a little bit longer warranty because they're commercial fleet, and then they want to give you that. You know, like Mr. Strunk said, a little bit different treatment than the regular public. But I can get that for you on what Chris priced out for you.
And the the bid that you presented, that's the total cost, delivery, everything, and is the vehicle available and?
Yeah, so this they've opened up fleet. So when we did this three years ago, this is a price not to exceed. Chris and Tim had this put together. I was out of town, right? Had the price not to exceed for you on there, but yes, that is the same. And the he has on here a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty days. The the commercial fleet has opened up, so it's easy. We place it, we're going to receive it. If for some reason they wouldn't give it to us on the commercial side, a fleet side, we would get it what's called retail and then just convert it. So and this is a pretty standard truck.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting looking at those bids that everyone maxes out at one fifty, you know, maximum delivery days, and then. And see they're starting to come down from, you know, it used to be one fifty and one twenty ninety, so we're starting to see him come down, which is exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, if you watch our lot, you can see that the inventory levels are going up. And that's just because inventory is more available now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Do we have any further questions, comments, discussion on that item? I would just echo my or I guess state my preference of utilizing Home Automotive with the with our five percent purchasing policy limit, so that's my preference on it. Anything further on this item? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We're adjourned.